Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our February 24th meeting of the Thousand Oaks City Council. And let's say our Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to come around front because I want to call somebody up to say the pledge with me. So just a moment. Are we on? Yes. We're honoring our volunteers in policing this evening, and I'd like to ask Betty Horner to come up if she would, please. Betty Horner and Jane Berlin were in the original class of 1995 for Volunteers in Policing. Twenty-three members were in that class, and Betty and Jane are the remaining two. So that makes you a volunteer in policing for 20 years. Yes, and that's why I asked you to say the pledge with me this evening. Well, thank you. So let's turn and face the flag. If everyone would stand, please. Put your hands over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Betty. And we'll see you at the podium. If I may have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
Councilmember Bill De La Penya. Present. Mayor Pro Tem Price.
Here.
Mayor Adam.
Here.
I don't believe there's any requests for continuances or any agenda items, so I'm going to go back down to the podium for our special presentations. All right, we have a number of very special presentations this evening, and we're going to honor two of our youths of Thousand Oaks. We're going to recognize two of them, a 15-year-old Thousand Oaks resident and a Westlake High School student, Paul Young, and 12-year-old Simi Valley resident, Altice Salazo. Kids, why don't you come on down? Paul and Altice are ice skaters. They're pair skaters. They skate together. Been skating since they were five years old, and Paul has been, and Altice since she was three and a half, currently competing in the juvenile pairs division. And just a moment ago, in the audience, I was, I asked Paul, a very technical question, I said, "So what do you call the person that you lift up?" And Paul said to me, "The girl." So I've got my education on ice skating now. They skate to the Star Wars program. That must be kind of fun. And they received first place in the 2015 Pacific Coast Sectional Figure Skating Championships with a score of 41.61. That sounds like a pretty high score, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. So then they advance to the U.S. Figure Skating Championships in Greensboro, North Carolina, where they got a score of 39.12 and a gold medal. Yeah. So I really want to congratulate Paul and Altice. I can imagine the work that must go into this. A lot of weekends, right? A lot of weeknights, practicing, practicing, practicing. They are winners of the 2015 U.S. Figure Skating Championship in the Juvenile Pairs Division, and I want to present them with a brass leaf that will be displayed at City Hall. And we also have an accommodation for you as well. So let me just get that. Paul, here is your brass leaf for 2014, and here's a brass leaf for the two of you.
Thank you.
All right. And we have a commendation that you can display, and it says that you've represented our community with distinction and honor. All right. Thank you. Very good. All right. Oh, and I want to wish you success in 2018, because that's going to be the Olympics, right?
Yes, definitely.
Yeah. Yeah. Where is the Olympics, the Winter Olympics, do you know?
South Korea.
South Korea. Excellent. Well, we're going to turn on our TV and see both of you there, huh?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
You didn't make it.
Great, great. Looking forward to it. Thank you very much for coming. Thanks, Altice. All right, next, I would like to invite Alfred Konama from the California Board of Equalization. Alfred has some information to share with us about the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, and there's going to be a resource fair supporting that program. Alfred, are you here this evening? Hmm. Alfred didn't make it. Probably stuck in traffic, yeah. All right, well, we'll come back to Alfred if we have time. And let us move on then to our Volunteers in Policing, of which we have a great representation tonight. I can't say enough about the Volunteers in Policing. 20 years on the job. You know, we as city leaders love to talk about how Thousand Oaks is the safest city in California and about the fourth safest in the country, and it's because of you, you know? You're the ones who, that really make that happen, and you're the ones that get us reelected, so we appreciate that as well. As I said, started in 1995. There's three police resource centers right now, a volunteer force of 100 people, and the two members that were original members, of course Betty Horner and Jane Berlin. And the Volunteers in Policing do all kinds of things that keep our police officers on the street. They do fingerprinting, they do police reports, they drive in patrol cars, and they just help make our city really the great city that it is, and it's an outstanding program. We probably save half a million dollars a year, thanks to you folks, which is quite a savings. So let me have Tim, Commander Hagel, come up. Tim Hagel. Our leader in law enforcement, Tim. Why don't you say a few words?
Sure. Well, thank you, Mayor, and council members. As you know, you hear daily, if not weekly, the great successes of our volunteers here. And Betty and the others for over 20 years, hundreds of thousands of hours. And it doesn't just go there. I mean, what I appreciate is having been out on the streets there as a young officer when Betty was the first volunteers going out there. We were taking reports with pencils and carbon paper. And as officers out there, we didn't have the volunteers until they came along. And I look at now, they're taking thousands of police reports a year, right here. These folks are using all of the equipment that's in the police car, just like the police officer, right there, and they're taking reports, which the mayor said succinctly is allowing those officers to be on those streets, targeting criminals while they're coming to your house, helping you, assisting you. Hundreds of searches over the years of people missing in our communities, in our parks, successful saves, as you recall, I spoke earlier this year. And I got goosebumps because, having started as a volunteer myself, I look at all of you here, and, you know, there's 40, 50 of them here, but there's over 100 volunteers every day. And as the mayor said, it's not even the money side, it's the thousands and thousands of hours every year that you donate for the community. And I just wanted to thank you from the bottom of my heart, really thank you. Round of applause for all of you. Thank you.
Betty, I'd like to present you, on behalf of the city, with this commendation for Volunteers in Policing celebrating their 20th anniversary, and I can't think of no better VIP to present it to than you for your service to our city. And I really want to thank you, and I want to thank all of you, because it's a valuable, valuable service that you provide. And I'll say to anyone who's interested in Volunteers in Policing, always looking for volunteers, right?
Yes, we are.
Oh, yeah.
They have to go through the Citizens Academy.
They do, they do. The Citizens Academy, which is a really interesting experience.
Yes.
Yeah, my wife went through it, yeah. I knew she'd be a good volunteer in policing when I met her.
Oh.
It's the first thing I said to her. Marilyn, you know, you'd make a good VIP. No. Anyway, Betty, thank you again. Let me present this commendation to you. Why don't we all go up front and get a picture?
I wanted to say.
Oh, sir, of course, Betty. Of course, of course.
Mayor Adam, council members, Commander Hagel, Senior Deputy Ed Buvay, and Isabel Correa, our new leaders, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for your confidence in us, thank you for your support, and thank you for honoring us for our 20 years of service to the community. It seems like it was just yesterday when 23 rookie volunteers were introduced to you and the community. So on behalf of all the Volunteers in Policing, thank you for this honor. And will you all please stand?
Come on, y'all. Let's get a photo, and then we'll leave. Come on. We're going to take a photo of you guys. Don't break the lens. Just someone start climbing it up. Come on, Betty, get control of this. It's like one minute we're happy, the other we're bad. Bernie, come back where we can keep an eye on Bernie. You're going to stand right in front of these ladies. Get him back. This is Mr. Hagel. Let's get a photo. Mayor Hagel, suppose it's a baseball. We all have that, right? One more. And don't move. There we go. Step two, Bernie. One more.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We're going to give you your paychecks out in the lobby. Paychecks out in the lobby.
Yeah, I know, those rubber ones. I got it back.
All right, we do have Alfred here, Alfred Konama, from the California Board of Equalization. And as I mentioned, he has some information about the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program and a resource fair that will be held to support that. So Alfred, if you'd come up and join me, please. Hello, Alfred.
Thank you. Hello. Thank you so much. Yeah, I just wanted to share some information about our Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program. We're very proud to be part of the third district with Chairman Jerome Horton's Office of the Board of Equalization. This will be our first year actually being part of this district. In our second year doing the VITA program, we're going to be at Oxnard College. And basically, millions of Californians in LA County and Ventura County go without tax credits, and they don't claim these credits that they're entitled to when it comes to filing tax returns. But our program, Free Income Tax Preparation and the Family Resource Fair, we are able to prepare tax for them free of charge and recoup a lot of these earned income tax credits, child tax credits, money that they really need and that can pull them out of poverty. So on March 14th of this year, we are going to be at Oxnard College, and from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock, or actually, it's going to be in the evening event so that we can accommodate a lot of the agricultural workers. So that's going to be from 3 o'clock to 7 o'clock. We're going to be able to help a lot of people recoup those tax credits through Board of Equalization employees as well as some student volunteers. So really, really hope to see a lot of you there. There's some information out in the lobby for those of you who are interested, and we thank the wonderful city of Thousand Oaks for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Alfred, for providing a valuable service to the community and maybe even getting a few people some refunds, huh?
Absolutely.
All right, that's great. Have a little proclamation here for you that commemorates the great job you're doing with the folks that need some help.
Awesome.
Thank you, Alfred.
It's an honor.
Thank you, sir. All right. All right. That concludes our presentations, and I'll be right back. Okay. We are now going to move on to public comments. Would you announce that for me, please, Ms. Lawrence?
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or in a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Four people have presented cards, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. I do have four speaker cards, and our first speaker is Marie Lakin, followed by Karen Gorbak. Hi, Marie.
Hi, I'm the District Representative for Senator Fran Pavly, and I just wanted to commend this city. I could bring this environmental sustainability award that I'm presenting tonight every single month, because you do so many wonderful things here, so many green initiatives. The Hill Water Treatment Plant just alone deserves one. But this is special because this is a program, your Biochar program that we're honoring tonight, that I don't know any other city does this. And it's something that I've had as a personal interest for a long time, and I'm going to let Kevin explain it a little bit better. But basically, Biochar is a soil amendment that you are using out in your lawns, out in city, in front of City Hall, all that grass. And it's rather unique what he's done, but you've cut your watering down by 50% out there. You're giving more nutrients to the soil, which means your grass is doing better, and it even sequesters carbon, which is a great thing. So this is for your service, Kevin, and your entire department, for this really innovative program. And also, I think the product is purchased locally, correct?
Out of county.
So, yes, so you're helping a local business, too. So I'm going to let Kevin come up here and talk a little bit about what he's doing, but also present this to him on behalf of the senator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this is a scary proposition, given the city's landscape supervisor and open mic, but I want to talk about Biochar for a second and let you know what it is. Actually, what it is, is it's biomass that's superheated to very high temperatures in an oxygen-deficient environment. So there's no off-gassing. So when you have a barbecue, you see the smoke, well, there's no smoke in this environment. So all the carbon is sequestered in the ash. And they are not able to do long-term studies because they believe that this material will be sustainable for up to 100, perhaps even thousands of years. So what does it do for the environment? What does it do for us? Well, we know that when we add it to the soil, it not only, we're not only putting carbon in the soil, which will help lower the salts in the soil, which is going to be good for the plants, but it's going to change the soil's structure and actually turn it into a sponge. And that's one of the reasons why it was able to help us cut back on our water usage. But some of the other benefits is, is that it invigorates the microorganisms in the soil, allowing for greater plant health, and it also prevents the offset of fertilizers or leaching of fertilizers in the soil. So you're actually reducing your need for fertilizers. And if we can bring the soil back to very healthy soil, we may not even need fertilizers. And I guess the last thing I want to say is that these types of out-of-the-box, forward-thinking projects are not possible without the support of a progressive city council and the support of a progressive city manager. So I just want to thank you folks for allowing me to do these types of projects. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Mitnick has something to say?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for, since Kevin's here and he's wearing a suit, which is a little unusual, this is the face of the community's public landscaping. He is the landscaping supervisor, or landscape supervisor oversees the city crews that are responsible for hundreds of acres of public landscaping, and he also oversees probably dozens of contract workers that we have. He's a combination of contract labor and municipal labor. But he's the face of being progressive and cutting-edge and following and implementing city council direction when you tell us to be more green, to lead by example, to do more with less, to deal with drought conditions, et cetera. He's the guy who coordinates and makes it happen. He doesn't come in the chambers here very often, he's out in the field. So I want to take a moment to convey appreciation to the state senator for recognizing this, but this is the guy that gets it done, and we value him. And Kevin, great job. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Well-deserved recognition, Kevin. Next up, Karen Gorbak, followed by Jordane Schooly. Hi, Karen.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Adam and council members. My name is Karen Gorbak. I reside in Thousand Oaks, and I am a commissioner on the Thousand Oaks Council on Aging. I am also chairing this year's Senior of the Year Award Banquet on June 4th at the Global Adult Community Center. I'm here this evening to let you know that nominations are now open for Senior of the Year. As you know, seniors make a tremendous contribution to our community through thousands of hours of volunteer service each year, generously donating their time, talents, energy, and creativity to enhance services and businesses throughout Thousand Oaks. This event gives us an opportunity to express our thanks. Nominations may come from individuals, businesses, and nonprofit organizations. The nomination form is online at the City of Thousand Oaks website under Senior Services. Our outstanding city liaison, Francine Spiegel, put the link to the nomination form right at the top of the page under Senior Services. You can't miss it. Just fill it out, click Submit, and it's done. Or print out the form and send it to the Council on Aging office at the Thousand Oaks Library on Janes Road. The deadline is April 15th, just like your taxes, but this filing is a lot more fun. Please don't wait till the last minute. Fill out the application this week, and we'll take it from there. Winston Churchill famously said, "We make a living by what we do, but we make a life by what we give." Let's give thanks to those who live these words and have given back so much to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Jordane Schooly, followed by Robert Hudson.
My name is Jordan Schooly. I'm here for a very similar reason. I am a member of the Thousand Oaks Youth Commission, and I'm here to tell you about the Youth Recognition Awards. So I am the chair of the Youth Recognition Awards this year. This is an event that we host to honor teens in our community who have done an outstanding amount of service and volunteering, using their talents and their creativity to benefit organizations and companies and events. So we are looking for nominations at this time. Nomination forms are available at www.toaks.org/youth, and we are inviting service organizations to nominate teens ages 13 to 19 who they believe are deserving of this award. Again, this nomination can be found at www.toaks/youth. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Robert Hudson.
Evening. How you doing?
Good, sir.
I'm Robert Hudson, a 38-year resident of the City of Thousand Oaks. And while I'm here, while I've stated my position on the Thousand Oaks Auto Mall Public Improvements Project before this body on numerous occasions, the merits and the necessity of the project are not the topic here. Tonight is a refresher course in civics. At the February 10th city council meeting, Councilmember Fox spoke at length about the benefits of the project. He told us the project was approved by prior council, now with two new members, and that the current and future city councils should honor those decisions. He declared, quote, "You have to be able to rely on this word of the city council even though yours may pass. Changing the rules because councils change is bad faith." I heard it, and it was quoted in the Acorn February 12th edition on the front page. Well, that's just not how our democratic political system works. We have elections, and there's no duty of any elected official or body of elected officials to endorse or reaffirm any decision of any predecessor official or body, or even to reaffirm his or her own prior positions. And while it is reasonable to expect, and should be expected, continuity with the past, otherwise anarchy and chaos would prevail, citizens have no absolute right to, quote, "rely upon the word of the city council even though yours may pass." Three cases in point prove that elected officials do and can change the rules. Number one, 2011, the city council approved a change in the long-in-place municipal code section 9-4.2309 to accommodate the planned auto mall sign that will follow the public improvements project. Number two, the auto mall sign itself and the code change go against the Thousand Oaks general plan put in place by city councils regarding Route 101 Ventura Freeway Scenic Highway System, which states, quote, "Strict adherence to the city's signed control ordinance and development controls effectively prevent the visual blight commonly associated with freeway-adjacent land uses." Number three, municipal code 9-4.2402 requires auto mall dealerships to provide a minimum of one off-street parking spot for every employee plus additional parking spaces for connected commercial uses. The dealerships, by their own admissions, deliberately violate that ordinance, and the city ignores the violation and is indeed rewarding that violation by committing four-plus million dollars of taxpayer money to provide, amongst many other things, some 330 additional parking spaces on-street for employees and customers. How's that for changing the rules is bad faith? I think those did break the faith. So council members, at the next project milestone that requires a vote, vote your conscience. That's why we elected you. Vote on the merits of the Thousand Oaks Auto Mall Public Improvements Projects, not Mr. Fox's mistaken interpretation of the democratic process. Ms. De La Penya can cast a no vote instead of abstaining. Mr. Adam and Mr. Price shouldn't be misled by Mr. Fox's.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. All right, that will conclude our public comments. So did you have any follow-up, Mr. Mitnick? All right, let's go to the consent calendar. Take note, my fellow council members, that 7K has been slightly revised to read that the agreement between the City of Thousand Oaks and the Federal Credit Union may be executed by the city manager, number one. And I don't mean to jump ahead of anybody, but I have to have 7L pulled to explain a little bit about that. Now, are there any other items to be pulled? No? All right. I do have some speaker cards, so we'll do that first, and then we'll get to 7L. First up is Aaron Bell. First up is Erin Bell.
All right.
Evening, Ms. Bell.
Hi. I have pictures here with me tonight. The first one I have up is, this is what my backyard looked like on December 12th, 2014. It was three to five feet deep of mud, covered our yard and side yards, and you can barely see the top of a five-foot fence that had been pushed over. This is our side yard. The morning, it took an estimated 1,650 wheelbarrows full of mud to clear it all out from our yard, and this does not include what it took to haul away the mud debris and demolition material from the inside of our house. This is a picture of a sandbag wall that the city has put in. It's about three feet high and is through our yard, side yard, and out the driveway. If this were a true temporary solution, and it was only planned to be in place for a few months while the city replanted the mountain and the HOA repaired and improved the drains and ditches, then it would be understandable. But we have been told to leave this sandbag wall in place for three to five years while nothing else is done. The sandbag wall means that our seven-year-old twin girls with special needs cannot play in their backyard because it is unsafe for them. It means an animal like a coyote or stray dog could jump up on the wall and jump over our back fence or side gate as, from the front. It means any homeowner on Via Santana is unable to sell their home because who would want to live next to, across from, or with all these sandbags? That's what the front of our house looks like. The wall has only been there for a short amount of time, and there are sandbags that are already starting to rip and have spilled. And it's very frustrating that this is never going to last for three to five years. This is my house with the mountain behind it. You can see that hardly any growth has occurred. The open space the city owns behind our house needs to be seeded so the hillside can grow back, and maybe we need the person, the landscaper, to come help us that Mr. Mitnick spoke of tonight. I'm asking again for open communication between the city, the HOA, and the homeowners. I'm asking for all the groups to work together to resolve this issue. I would like the city to put together an ad hoc committee that will communicate with all of us closely and work closely with us. My number-one concern is the safety of my family, and the only way for us to be safe is for action to be taken by the city and HOA to stabilize the mountain and improve the drainage system. We should not have to be afraid every time it starts to rain, and it is not fair for us, and you wouldn't want to live this way. Please help us.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Michael Petrick, followed by Keith Wintermuth.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Michael Petrick. I live in Thousand Oaks. Erin Bell is my sister. Back when the fire happened, I got a phone call when I was at work from her that just had a, a tone of fear in a loved one's voice that you never, ever want to hear, and I prayed to God that I would never have to hear it again. Luckily, I was able to help because I was down the street. When the mudslide happened, I was in Canada and was not able to help, and it was very frustrating because everyone knew and everyone could see this going to happen. We're lucky that we live in Southern California where we don't have hurricanes, we don't have tornadoes, we have the occasional earthquake, we have the occasional mudslide. As our mayor said earlier this evening, Thousand Oaks is the safest city in the state. I don't feel that way right now because at any time it rains, I have people from all over, all over the country who are my friends calling me, asking to make sure my sister's okay and her family's okay, and they're not. At any minute, it, when it rains, we could have another mudslide, and I just pray that, that Newberry Park Dos Ventos doesn't turn into La Conchita, and that we don't have CNN here reporting about the devastating, devastating effects that could have been prevented. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petrick. Keith Wintermuth. Evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. I've spoken twice before. I'm going to make my comments brief. We are, we live at 4985 Via Santana. We are neighbors to the Bell's. So we can attest, my wife and I can attest to what you've just seen. This is the, these were the temporary bags that were placed. First of all, I want to thank the city council for joining with the federal government in providing some emergency relief. I spoke with the HOA, Dos Ventos HOA today, and they will be receiving an engineering bid and report on specifically what we as a community can do to provide some permanent response to the situation. As you all know, the sandbags are really a temporary source. The federal government was proposing that this be a three-to-five-year plan. I don't think that either the HOA, the homeowners, nor do I think any reasonable person would conclude that that is in fact a reasonable five-year agenda, that what we really need are more substantial and permanent fixes to solve the drainage issue until the growth comes back. We have seen some substantial growth on annuals that have taken place on the hillside due to the rain, but we need more substantial root-bearing plants to really continue to hold the soil. Other communities in San Diego, Ramona, have taken various steps at times post-fire to provide some support to the hillside, including straw waffles and hydro mulching. And so I just simply want to encourage you, the HOA will be receiving this report on Monday. They will be sharing that with you and city staff. And like Erin's suggestion, I hope that you consider a conversation with the HOA to really determine a group effort to protect both the property and the lives of the homeowners who are adjacent to this fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wintermuth. All right. May I get a motion then to approve the consent calendar without 7L? We'll, we'll talk about that in just a minute. Mr. Price?
Yes, I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
All right. Vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right, thank you. The reason I had 7L pulled is, is this. Staff originally recommended for the three businesses there that we grant a two-year lease with a 180-day termination notification. It's my feeling, because of the sensitivity of the properties, they're right on the boulevard, part of our downtown core, to allow us to have a little more flexibility, I wanted an alternative put in there of a one-year lease with a 90-day notification. And I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Adam, the, the properties have been spoken with, and they're good with this one-year proposal.
Yes, sir. Staff has talked with the prop, or the tenants, told them that we would recommend an alternative recommendation to reduce the lease terms to one year with a 90-day notice. Of course, they weren't 100% happy, but they certainly understand the flexibility that the city may want in those properties. So currently in front of you is an alternative for the original staff recommendation.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion? Or, Ms. Billaipena?
For those who haven't, for the public, is there a change in the lease rate to all the businesses? And there are, I think, is it four?
There's actually three.
Okay.
There are, there are lease rate changes. For two of them, one is held steady, one has been a slight reduction, and as another one, a slight increase. I think when we were looking at them, you have to remember, these were leases that we acquired through the purchase back prior to the recession, and we'd never modified the agreements. We had agreements that had gone through, I think, 2011, right, right as the redevelopment agency termination dissolution occurred, and so we couldn't renegotiate lease terms. So in those discussions, having shorter terms for the tenants, we negotiated rates that do have slight adjustments, not significant decreases and not significant increases.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, then, I would like to move that on 7L, that we enter in a lease agreement with above all glass, enhanced landscape management, and smog check for one year with a 90-day notification provision. Any discussion on that motion? If not, we vote, please?
Motion carries 4-0.
All right, thank you. Let us move on to our public hearing. If you would mind, open that for me. Ms. Lawrence?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8A, initiation of annexation proceedings and pre-zoning of Kelly Estates area. Zone changes 2009-70039 and 2013-70275. Annexations 2013-70084, 2009-70044, and Annexation 159. Located along Whitegate Road, LeCam Road, and South Side Alice Anne Road, the applicants are Ramin Kadadi Dadi, sorry, Michael Wiggins, and Shlomo Barzian. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. We have one speaker, which is an applicant representative who will be allowed 15 minutes with a five-minute rebuttal.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Mr. Spector will be presenting our report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We're here to discuss an application to pre-zone property prior to annexation to the City of Thousand Oaks, and an application to, for that annexation. And the, the process of annexation involves not only adding territory to the City of Thousand Oaks, but it also involves detachment from various entities listed here that only apply to unincorporated areas. That's the County Resource Conservation District Service Area Number 32, which involves monitoring of onsite septic systems, and the Gold Coast Transit District. Now, there were several property owners that filed applications in order to obtain water and wastewater services from the city. Those three properties needed to be, the area had to be expanded because the agency that's responsible for approving annexations has standards, and they require that the territory create a logical boundary and that eliminate county islands. Now, state law also provides a streamlined procedure that applies to county islands that basically waives protest proceedings. State law also requires that the property be annexed, to be annexed, be pre-zoned to establish the zoning that would apply upon annexation. The zoning that staff has proposed would not increase the density of development. Each individual lot under the county zoning would allow one home, and under the, with pre-zoning for the city, would only, only one house would be allowed per parcel. This is a map that shows the territory to be annexed. You could see it's, the stippled area is the unincorporated terrain, and it's an island or a peninsula, if you will. It's substantially surrounded by city land. Here's an aerial view of the same property, and this is a map showing the land use element of the general plan. And as you can see, there's two designations in yellow, very low-density residential, and the, the green area, which is substantially hillside terrain, is designated as undevelopable land. This slide just shows a comparison between the existing county zoning and the proposed city zoning. Now, I'd like to just go over briefly the parcels that would be affected by this, this change, the first of which is a parcel on Whitegate Road. It's already developed with a single-family home, shown here. Likewise, this property, shown in red, highlighted in red, contains a single-family home depicted here. Now, this, this is a property, this is the largest of the properties involved in this annexation, and it was owned by Mr. Wiggins, who initially filed an annexation request with the city. It's since been purchased by Mr. Mushiri, who I believe is here tonight. And he, he's hoping to build a home on this vacant property. The home site that he's interested in using is, is depicted here in the lower left-hand corner of the property, highlighted in yellow. And the home site can be seen here as that grassy field at the bottom of the hill, just to the left of the water tank on the right. Now, this is another vacant property, happens to be another one of the applicants, Mr. Kodadadi, who was interested in building a home on the highlighted property. An aerial view of that property. And the parcel in question is to the left of the existing home and accessory building. 19 LeCam Road is also developed property. It's the same, the home is the same home that was shown on the previous slide. 16 LeCam Road is also, well, it consists of two parcels, actually, one of which is vacant. And here's a ground-level view of the, the home, and in the foreground is the vacant property. 12 LeCam Road is also developed. 2430 Alice Anne Road is a vacant one-acre property. There's currently no development proposed on this one. Is a view of the property looking east. And 2420 Alice Anne Road is also developed with a single-family home. Staff examined the annexation and pre-zoning with respect to the California Environmental Quality Act, and determined that both the annexation and pre-zoning are exempt from CEQA. And to sum it all up, I'd like to just mention that these properties, at least the vacant properties, must be annexed in order to receive utilities, specifically water and wastewater service from the City of Thousand Oaks. The pre-zoning is required by state law prior to annexation. Another important feature is additional property was brought into this annexation to create a logical boundary and eliminate a county island, and it's important to note that the pre-zoning will not change the ultimate density of development. So, in conclusion, staff recommends that city council introduce an ordinance, it's in your packet, to pre-zone the territory, and to approve a resolution of application to the Local Agency Formation Commission to annex to the City of Thousand Oaks detached from the Ventura County Resource Conservation District, the Ventura County Service Area 32, and the Gold Coast Transit District, and finally, to authorize filing of the required application with the Local Agency Formation Commission. And with that, I'll conclude and be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Spector.
You're welcome.
Questions for Mr. Spector? Ms. Billaipena?
Thank you. Mr. Spector, good evening. I was just wondering if the applicant will be bearing the cost for the entire application process?
Yes, there's... Yes, there's actually two applicants, and they filed the annexation applications as well as pre-zoning applications.
And will this -- these additional units or homes add -- affect our Measure E Bank in any way?
No, there's no change to the general plan.
Very good. Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We do have one speaker, and that is Mr. Moshiery. Evening, Mr. Moshiery.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I would like to speak strongly in favor of this annexation as the new property owner of this 502-1 Whitegate. My wife and I are looking forward to proceed with our plans for building a house and residing in this neighborhood. So I strongly support that. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Moshiery. Any response, Mr. Spector? Probably not. All right, thank you. And any further questions from any council members? We're okay there, so I'm going to move that we -- no, I'm not going to move. I'm not doing that. Chair can move. I'm going to close the hearing and call for discussion and/or a vote on this issue. Mr. Price.
Yes, thank you. I think this makes perfect sense. It is, you know, serviced by all of the utilities or all of the amenities that we have here in Thousand Oaks, and I think we should welcome our new neighbors to Thousand Oaks. And with that, I would move approval of staff's recommendation one and two.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Motion on the floor, vote please.
The motion carries four zero, and the ordinance title is an ordinance approving pre-zoning for certain property in Kelly Estates area prior to annexation, Z 2013-70275 and 2009-70039.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. We now have a study session that will be led by John Adams, our Finance Director, on fees, fines, penalties, rates, and assessments.
Let us -- give us a second to get the PowerPoint up.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm going to make a quick presentation, try my best to keep -- yeah, loud. Make sure you can hear me. So briefly, tonight, City Council is holding a study session on user fees. Tonight's presentation, I'll give you a brief background, talk about some highlights, and then we're open for questions and direction from council. So tonight, we're going to be covering fees citywide. So as this list shows you, this is -- these are the departments in which we provide or charge fees. We're not just going to talk about non-development, but development and development impact fees. This is part of the budget process. We do this every two years, and as you know, we have a two-year budget, so this is the starting of our two-year budget process. Staff does review all fees. We have about 700 fee items in the user manual, and it does cover development-related and non-development-related fees. Just the brief definition of a user fee, it's a fee or rate charged to an individual or a group that receives a private benefit, and I think that's important. It's not a tax, it's not impact fees, and there are gray areas. Just quickly, this just shows you, you know, the private benefit, which would be building in safety fees versus advanced planning, which might have some private benefit, but are for the public. Just briefly, talk about the policy, City Council. I should say what the state -- what the state law says is fees may not exceed the estimated reasonable cost of providing the service for which a fee is charged. That's state law. City Council policy has been full-cost recovery, except for cases in which there is a public benefit or fees in which we want to encourage compliance. And then, back in 1999, the Community Budget Task Force had a recommendation, which is fees and charges in the absence of a specific public policy exception should be implemented to achieve full-cost recovery. And I'll talk about some of the exceptions coming up in a few minutes. Just talk about the cost of providing fees. When we do fee calculations, it does show not just the direct personnel costs, it shows supervision, overhead, and other costs associated with providing that service. Here are just some common fee concepts. User fees should be based on the cost of service, should not be arbitrary, not intentionally subsidized, and no greater than the estimated reasonable costs. So the manual is more than a manual on user fees. We include fines and penalties, rates and charges, and assessments for lighting and landscaping districts. Just briefly, most fees, I will tell you, were charged -- were increased by a labor factor. Over the last two years, the city's labor costs have gone up 3.03% over a two-year period. So when we look at fees that are highly dependent on the cost of personnel, those fees were adjusted based on the increase in cost of personnel, so 3% roughly. This book, which I think is several hundred pages, very thick, there's two sections. One section -- the first section is the actual detail of the proposed fee. The second section, which is probably more important, is the actual comparison of the current fee versus the proposed fee. So if you look at about halfway through the book, there's a tab that's called City Clerk User Fee. It's the second tab. That's the starting of the comparisons, and that's important if you want to see the difference between a prior fee and the proposed fee. So with this, there are eight new fees that staff is recommending, very minor in the scheme of things, but they range from everything from a library equipment rental fee all the way down to rentals of mics for the theaters. And so we have a highlights of those eight fees. So quickly, development-related fees. I think this is important. Periodically, between every six and eight years, we actually do a full-cost study to see what it costs us to provide services either in public works, building and safety, or planning. The last study was in 2013, so we have updated costs that were done in 2013, and fees were adjusted accordingly. Prior to that, we had studies done in 2010, and 2008, and 1999. The importance of the 2013 study was is that significant changes occurred over a five-year period related to activity levels, staffing levels, and our cost of doing business. And so it was important to update fees based on the costs that we were incurring at that point. Just some cost study objectives, these are pretty standard. You want to ensure compliance with state law, you want to simplify the fees, you want to enhance fairness and equity, and I have a list of some others there as well. So going on to most of the fees, the goal is to get to full-cost recovery. There are fees that are below full-cost recovery, and some of the increases that occurred in a few of the departments ranged between closer to 5% to try to get to full-cost recovery. But again, I think the increases are modest to try to get us to full-cost recovery. I mentioned earlier, there are exceptions to full-cost recovery. Council, this is the same list that you've seen probably at least the eight years I've been doing this for the city. There's a list of 15 fees, so if we can just walk through them, these are just your standard -- the standard exceptions that council has adopted. If there's other exceptions, certainly city staff would appreciate that direction, but these are the standard 15 fees that meet that exception. There are increases to some of the fees. In some cases, it is the 3%. So I'm just going to quickly go over the highlights per department. Every department listed does charge fees. The first department, City Clerk, they only have four fees. They only had one change, and that was to reduce the color copies from $1 to $0.50 as costs have come down in our color copy. Next, citywide fees, there are a total of 10 fees, eight fees that had changes. There are actually two new fees, which I had listed earlier. One is the library conference room rental fees, and then with the expansion of the MSC, there's actually a room rental charge for the conference room out the MSC. Building and safety, total of 27 fees, three fees were adjusted. If you look when I talk about page 21, it's really the page 15 of Section 2 that shows you really those comparisons. So if you want to see the details, you can go to page 15 of the -- of Section 2 to look at the details. Next, planning. Planning actually has 83 fees. Most fees were adjusted by the labor factor. There were some fees that were adjusted closer to 5% to get them closer to full-cost recovery. If you want to see the comparisons, those start on page 29. And there should be a tab, it should be the second tab, that will say Community Development, Planning Division, and at the bottom, it should say page 30 of 85. Cultural Affairs, 42 fees. Actually, Cultural Affairs had four new fees related to the resident organizations, and then rental fees in this year, and then the wireless microphones. Details on page 48. Finance fees, 14 total fees, 13 adjusted. Details on page 57. Library fees, six fees, two adjusted, two new fees, and those are highlighted, at least the proposed on page 63. And then police fees, just one fee adjusted, page 65, and that has to do with the tow fees. And if you remember, a couple of years ago, we streamlined the tow fees and reduced them, and so this is an increase. Public Works fees, 64 total fees. Most were done by labor factors, a majority of the non-related were also done by the labor factor as well. And then development impact fees, just quickly, there are 11 traffic fees that are done by Public Works. There are no proposed adjustments to those fees. They're going to be providing a next study over the next two-year budget cycle that will update those fees accordingly. Water and wastewater fees, they are not proposed to be adjusted at this point. Public Works will do a -- the financial plan that they do annually, and those fees would be adjusted later, at a later point. And then police facilities fee, this is recommended increase based on the five-year average of the city's portfolio. This is to repay for the improvements or for the purchase out at East Valley. And so tonight, the recommendation is to receive the information on user fees and development impact fees is presented at the study session, and to schedule a public hearing scheduled for April 26, 2015. And staff is available for any questions and direction.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
You're welcome.
Questions for Mr. Adams. Ms. Beldner, opinion?
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Since this is a study session, I wanted to ask you about a couple of the fees that are associated with our oak tree ordinance on which we currently have a moratorium. I was wondering, it appears that there is a slight increase to which particular fee is that, for pruning, encroachment, removal, processing?
I'm sorry, can you tell me what page you're looking at?
Well, I'm actually referring to your slide, and that would be on page 10.
Correct. So if I'm looking at, and I think the best way is towards the back, there's a page 32, 32 of 85, and that actually shows you the fees, the various fees that are done for oak landmark tree permitting administrative processing, oak landmark tree permit planning commission of processing, and then oak landmark tree permit minor modification. Hopefully, if you see that, and then it also carries on to page 33, it actually outlines the different permit fees related to each of the various permits. So hopefully, does that --
Well, there was a confusion about the page numbers. I was looking at page 65 in our user draft user fee manual. Page 65?
Correct.
And 67?
Yeah, and if you -- and so those are the proposed draft fees, okay, for those related permits. But if you turn to the back and look at page 32, 33, you see the comparisons of what they were and what they're being proposed at.
Okay.
So I think that that's for the benefit of the council. You want to know what the differences are and what the increases were, and I think it's more concise to look at it that way. And I'm going to -- I'm going to -- I was going to ask Mr. Prescott if you want to make comments, but in looking at those numbers, I believe they were simply based on the labor Yeah, so 3% -- they were adjusted based on the labor factor.
Well, given that we do have a moratorium and a pending decision on the oak tree ordinance, we're not supposed to have a public hearing -- we won't have a public hearing on this until April, correct? April 24?
Well, the code amendment is tentatively scheduled for April 14. However, the -- you know, that just affects certain kinds of permits, and actually, the owner exemption, there's no fee on, so all other oak tree permits are still processed, and we still need a fee in place to recoup our costs.
And just to note, if there's any suggested changes in fees, even at the April 14 meeting, that could be incorporated in the adoption for fees for April 28th, if that helps the council understand that right now, these are the proposed fees. If there's direction to change those based on the outcome of that, we can incorporate them into the April 28 meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just do have a quick question. In the attachment in our staff report, it lists the fees affected by City Council exceptions. Would these be the only fees that were not getting full-cost recovery, or these are just the council exceptions?
For clarification, these are ones that are -- that have been directed by council to make these exceptions to full-cost recovery. Every fee in the book is not at 100% full-cost recovery. There are fees that aren't, but the goal is to get them there. And over time, you -- you know, if we see that a fee is 25% under full cost, we don't just jump it up 25%, we try to inch it up over time because the fees -- the costs do change over time. So I guess my comment is not every fee that is where our goal to charge full cost is at full cost, but the goal is to get them at full cost. The exceptions are those fees that council has directed. You do not make an attempt to make full-cost recovery. These are fees that have a public benefit.
All right.
I hope I clarified that.
I needed that clarification. All right, very good. Any other questions, discussions? And I do need a motion on this. Ms. Beldner, opinion?
I move. Receive -- is it receive and file?
Receive and schedule a public hearing.
Yes, and schedule a public hearing for April 28.
All right, thank you. Motion on the floor, vote please.
Motion carries four zero.
All right, thank you, Mr. Adams. And now we have a department report. Melissa Hurtado will give us that about some new parking citation software.
Good evening, Mayor Adams, council members. I'm here tonight with Police Chief Tim Hegel to recommend approval of an agreement with Complis Data Innovations for parking citation handheld devices and software. So what I'd like to do tonight is give you some information on how the city currently processes parking citations, what some of our challenges are, and how we can make the process more effective and efficient. So these are some of the terms that can be used to describe our current process, and we'd really like to change this. So I'm going to go ahead and explain how things are done currently. Well, this is a copy of one of our citations, and as you can see, the citations are handwritten into ticket books. The citation -- The citation copies are turned into the police department, who then forwards them to the finance department for collection. Finance department staff manually enters the citations. Registered owner information is gathered from the California Department of Motor Vehicles for each citation, and a notice is sent to the registered owner. If the citation goes unpaid, we send the citation amount along with penalties and administrative fees to the Department of Motor Vehicles for collection on the vehicle registration. One thing to note is that in addition to processing the roughly 5,000 citations issued in Thousand Oaks each year, we also have an agreement with the City of Moore Park to process their 3,500 annual citations. So this is our software. One of our challenges happens to be the software that we're currently using. It was developed in 1987 by city programmers, and although it has served us well over the years, it's not equipped to provide the analytical information that's needed in this day and age. There are still a lot of manual processes involved that can't be integrated into the software. In addition, our Information Technology Division is hoping to phase out this system in the next several years. Since the citations are handwritten and have to be manually input, there are many times when license plate numbers are either not legible or numbers are transposed. Also, the person entering the citations can just make a data entry error. About 100 to 200 citations each year are issued to vehicles with out-of-state license plates. Since we only have a relationship with the California DMV, we're not able to retrieve registered owner information for these citations. And although many people pay the fine from the ticket, many others do not, and we're unfortunately unable to get their contact information from their respective DMV offices. The length of time from when the citation is written to when it is entered can be up to two weeks and sometimes even longer. Customers attempting to pay on the automated phone system might find themselves unable to pay since the citation doesn't yet exist in the database. We want to encourage prompt payment, and the processing time prevents this. So we issued a request for proposal in August last year and received 10 responses. Finance, police, and the City of Moore Park staff were involved with this process. In reviewing the responses, we wanted to be sure to select a firm that would help cut our processing time, eliminate those manual processes, maximize our collections, and provide useful reporting tools, all at a great price. So based on the proposals we received, the top two firms were invited to interview with finance, police department, and City of Moore Park staff. The two firms were both very well-qualified, and I'm confident that either firm would have been excellent to work with. Complis' pricing and terms made a big impact on this decision. Complis has a large presence on the East Coast and in the Midwest, and is just breaking into the California market. Because of this, we are able to take advantage of special pricing. Complis has proposed a price of 7% of parking citation revenue net of the state-mandated fees. In doing an analysis on many of the firms that proposed, Complis' proposal is well below what the other firms' annual cost would be. In addition, Complis' pricing includes all of the hardware and replaces the handheld units every three years at no additional cost. With other firms, the units had to be purchased or leased. Also, Complis' pricing model made the most sense to us. Other firms charge for each little service separately, and ensuring that we would be built correctly wouldn't be an easy task. Complis' flat-rate percentage model is much simpler. And lastly, their clients seem to be genuinely pleased with the service that they receive. Over the course of several years, we saw demonstrations from numerous vendors. We saw a variety of devices, from the one that you see here, to two-piece units, to electronic pens. With the police department being involved in these demonstrations, they found the one-piece units to be most practical for them. The devices can be used to enter the parking citation, take photos of the violation, and print the citation amongst other things. The citation information is transferred into the database when the device is docked at the end of the shift. The fast-track software that Complis offers provides a user-friendly interface. We are able to search based on a variety of fields and filter through the data much more easily. They also include the Crystal Reports module that allows for a robust custom reports. Without the need for manual data entry, there will be less occurrence of errors in the citation data. And since Complis has relationships with DMV in all states, we will be able to locate the owners of those out-of-state vehicles. With daily downloads of the citation information, we will have that information in the database in a much more timely manner. Complis clients average 91% collections rate and go as high as 96%. This is in comparison to our current collections rate of 81%. This increase in collections would cover most of the contract costs. Photos and notes can also be added to each citation record and can be accessed by police department staff, finance staff, as well as the customer when viewing online. There is a GIS mapping function, which can be helpful for the police department as well as the traffic staff in Public Works to identify areas where more attention may be required. When a person contests a citation, all the information can be uploaded to the database and reviewed by the police department electronically. But it's not just the city who benefits. Recipients of citations benefit as well. Citations can not only be paid online, but if they feel the citation was issued in error, they can complete the administrative review form online and upload documents. Before they contest the citation, though, they will also be able to view the photos that were taken of the citation, the violation, and they can choose whether or not to pursue that, the contesting the citation. Since the citation information would be in the database within a day, customers are able to make prompt payment and not be frustrated with our phone system not locating their The Public Works Department has a parking permit program, which could benefit from using the Complis' software, which includes a parking permits module. The parking permits integrate with the handheld devices and would allow officers in the field to easily see if somebody's using an invalid permit, as we do have many each year that are reported lost or stolen. And although I don't anticipate any of the other uses that are mentioned here, it's just nice to know that the capability is there if we do need it. The staff recommends that the agreement with Complis Data Innovations be approved, and we are available for questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hurtado. Questions? Mr. Price?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For either of you, I guess, what's our relationship with the City of Moore Park now? And how does that change with the use of this new technology?
We were working with the City of Moore Park since the beginning of this process, and we've had a relationship with them since 1990. And basically, the finance staff does the same thing that we do with the Thousand Oaks citations, so we data-enter them, send out their notifications, attach the records to the DMV vehicle registration. And we have informed them from the beginning of this process that at some point, we will need to terminate the agreement, but we will allow, we will work with them to allow them time to go through their own process to select a vendor. They have a pretty, you know, hefty program themselves. They issue quite a few citations in comparison to their population, looking at our citations and theirs, 5,300 versus 3,500. So there are programs that will probably work even better for them than what we are able to offer.
Okay, I think a lot of those are probably at the community college, huh? I would imagine that's a robust area to generate some revenue. Another question, I don't know, and this is probably for Commander Hegel. Do we have chronic violators here in the City of Thousand Oaks? And do we have the ability to monitor, track that, and then boot those vehicles that might be chronic violators and not have paid their citations? And if we don't have that now, will this give us that ability?
I guess in answer that, we can both kind of answer both of that question together. Like any other city, there are chronic violators. You know, you think of the classic TV shot where, you know, in Chicago, someone gets a ticket, they open the glove compartment, there's like 40 tickets sitting in there. There are chronic, there are chronic parking violations. However, with the advent of the system where it goes on to the DMV registration, that has helped quite a bit, but that does occur. The delays are, the current delays with the current system are extensive because by the time the officer turns it in, approved by their shift, and goes through the process, this is definitely going to help with that. Definitely.
And to answer your question, they do have a SCOFF law program built in. I didn't mention it because it's not, it's not critical to our program. However, I believe in the 10 years that I've been here, we have towed about three vehicles for chronic violations.
Thank you very much. That's good to hear. Only three.
Thank you. Any other questions? I do have a quick question. Are any other cities in the county using a similar system to this, or this very system?
Nobody's using this very system. The only other city in California using it right now is Arroyo Grande, because I mentioned that they are breaking into the California market. So most of their clients are on the East Coast or in the Midwest. But Ventura is using a similar product, and Oxnard is using handheld devices as well.
How's that working out for them? Good?
Yes.
All right, that's what I thought. Okay, great. Thank you for that information. And we will need a vote here to recommend that we approve the agreement with Complis Data Innovations. Mr. Price, would you like to make that motion?
Certainly, I would lose staff's recommendation one and two on this item. Stepping into the 21st century here.
There we go. Thank you. We need motion on the floor, if you'd vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right, thank you. And now we have some planning commissioners to reappoint. I'm going to go to each council member and tell us your reappointment, and we'll vote separately on each one. Why don't we start with Mr. Price?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would like to nominate Peter Pell for reappointment to the planning commission. Pete actually started on the planning commission the very same night that I did, back in 2011. He has done, in my estimation, a great job of being involved in the process, and for that reason, I'd like to see him remain. So thank you.
All right. Let's vote on that, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Peter Pell is reappointed. Ms. Beldner, opinion?
Thank you, Mayor Adams. My planning commission nominee, David Newman, has proven to be a very quick study since taking the position in, I believe it was really in September. And as a result of his excellent performance, I see no reason why to change, and I will reappoint David Newman.
Thank you, Ms. Beldner, opinion? Vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
And Mr. David Newman is reappointed. And Mr. Fox has a little laryngitis, but if you would tell us about your reappointment for just a moment.
Thank you, I do have a little laryngitis. I'm going to move to appoint Darrell Reynolds back to the planning commission.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fox. Can we vote on that, please?
I was wondering why we haven't heard from you all night.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right, and Darrell Reynolds is reappointed. Congratulations to all the planning commissioners. Having been a planning commissioner, and I think we all were at one time or another, it's a tough job, a lot of work, and we really appreciate the work you do. It helps us immensely. Mr. Mitnick, any follow-up comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no follow-up comments. The next city council meeting will be next Tuesday, March 3, same time, channel, and place. We have one public hearing, and that involves the one-year extension to the moratorium for oak and landmark tree removals. It's just a little housekeeping item until the council acts on the recommendations that the committee had. That went to the planning commission last night, and will come to you in early April. And there'll be one department report at this time, a general plan annual update. And if I could, make a plug for this weekend. On Saturday, February 28, the newest symphony will be holding its next concert, and it'll be a Rachmaninoff piece. And the reason I'm plugging it is the pianist, Sean Chin, he is from Thousand Oaks. He's a resident, well, was a resident, and he's done very well. So he'll be the pianist that night. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Ms. Noonan, if you would announce our closed session items, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two closed session items. The first one is for existing litigation, Karen Montana versus City of Thousand Oaks, case number 56201100408151 pursuant to government code section 54956.9A. And the second matter is potential litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D2 and E2. Based on the facts set forth on the agenda, it is unlikely I'll have anything to report.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan. And now to our good news moment. I would highly encourage my fellow council members at the end of a meeting, if they have any good news to share briefly, to feel free to do so in the future. My good news is just two things. Over the weekend, the Canejo Players Theater presented the City of Thousand Oaks with their first annual arts advocate award, which I was happy to accept on behalf of the city. 58 years in existence, the Canejo Players Theater offers a great opportunity as a community playhouse for people to write plays, be on stage for the first time. They've even tried to recruit some of us to be in their place. It's really a great organization. Second one, Westminster Free Clinic, 21 years in Thousand Oaks, treating people that need help with dedicated physicians, received a $200,000 grant from the AstraZeneca Healthcare Foundation for their Corazon Sonos Para Mi Familia program, which means Healthy Hearts for My Family. So it's a program of nutrition and exercise, and I was very happy to see that happen because Westminster Free Clinic is a great organization. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting to our next one, March 3. Thank you for joining us this evening.